Evening. It is 6:00 PM, December 13th, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable, Channel 8. If we could all rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
All right. Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody on it has had anything? Great. Thank you very much. Also, I will ask for public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. Sometimes it may be in the middle, but historically, we try to keep it for the end. So tonight, we have four members sitting, so it's not going to be hard. I mean, five, I'm sorry. Five members sitting. Some, if Sophie have anybody stepping down, that will make a situation where the applicant can make a decision whether he or she chooses to move forward. So it'll be the five people sitting at this table here. So having said that, Charlie, would you read the first, I think, continued hearing?
I will. Continued hearings for December 13th, 2023, 48 Greenwood Road. Petitioners Joyce A. and Daniel Marsters request a variance under 17431 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of retaining walls on property located in the R3 zoning in Papaneset overlay district, map 117, parcel 323, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record Joyce A. Marsters as trustee of the Greenwood Trust. A letter has been received from the attorney dated November 30, 2023, requesting a withdrawal, and this will be read into the record. I have that letter dated November 30, 2023, to Ron Bovie, chairman of the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, from Christopher L. Corrane, relative to 48 Greenwood Road. Dear Mr. Bondi, it is requested that the applicants be permitted to withdraw their request for a variance without prejudice. Thank you in anticipation via cooperation.
Would you like to make a motion, Charlie, in reference to that letter?
Yeah. Move that the applicant be permitted to withdraw their request for a variance without prejudice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Charlie, would you read the next continued hearing, please?
I shall. The next continued hearing is 42 Wheeler Road. Owner Marcio De Jesus requests a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise an existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in the R5 zoning district, map 57, parcel 7, Mashpee, Mass., continued from October 25th, 2023, November 8th, 2023, at the request of the attorney.
By golly.
That's a nice long, thin lot, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corrane, representing the applicant Marcio De Jesus. He is the owner of property at 42 Wheeler Road. We have applied for a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 to raise and replace the existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling. So this is, this lot's about 1.4 acres, which is shy of the 80,000 required in the R5 zoning district, so we have a non-conforming lot. The structure itself, the structure that's being replaced is non-conforming in only one aspect, and that's because it's within 50 feet of the setback to the wetlands. So the structure that's proposed to be replaced, that is its only non-conformity. Now, there are some other structures on the lot that are non-conforming. There's a shed or a structure that's 12 feet off, but as far as the structure that we're touching, that, the only non-conformity is the setback to the wetlands. So what we're proposing is to basically replace it almost in kind. It is getting a little bit bigger. The existing lot coverage is 11.3%. The proposed lot coverage is 12.1%. There are no flood zones, so there's no landslide or coastal storm flowage, or no structure coverage, anything like that we need to worry about. We can look straight at the maximum lot coverage, which in the R5 is 20%. So again, 11.3 to 12.1. This project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. This project will be installing an IA system as part of the project. We're moving a little bit further back from the wetland. We're not creating any new non-conformities. We're not intensifying any existing, but again, there are none except for the wetland on this particular lot, or this particular structure. So pretty straightforward project in that regard. Happy to, you know, dry wells will be installed, so happy to answer any questions.
What I'd like to do is, Charlie, could you read any letters into the record, please, from any boards or committees or anybody from the town? I also want to add, anything from Evan, please? Take your time.
Okay. Conservation Department comments, Dan Kent, for Wednesday, December 13th, relative to Wheeler Road, 42 Wheeler Road. NOI application was approved unanimously by the commission. Approved plan addresses driveway runoff concerns, mitigation plantings, septic upgrade to IA, and structures are no closer to the resource area. 42 Wheeler Road Board of Health received 112723. Septic needs to upgrade to four-bedroom septic with IA technology.
Here's some building plans, John. I'm going to pass out some building plans. Take a look at them.
Yep.
There's a sheet of them right there.
And I believe that's all I have.
I do not believe Evan gave any comments, so you probably.
No comment, because it was a prior.
All right, well, so that being said, board comments, please. I am passing around right now. Are you receiving some elevation of a building? You want to take a look at that?
Yep.
Why don't we just spend a moment here and get caught up? So just for clarity, you're not creating any new non-conformities?
That's correct.
You're actually reducing one non-conformity, which is wetland setback?
Yeah.
And you are doing dry wells?
Yes. Doing the IA system.
Yep. Might as well just let the board review some plans.
No letters or emails from neighbors?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. I saw nothing else.
Here is another set of.
Conservation, Public Health.
Jonathan, we have another set of plans?
Okay, that's the height.
Right. The height is approximately 23.8 feet, so well under, well under your 35 allowed.
32.8, I see that, man.
You would tell us that anyway, right?
Yes.
Well, it wouldn't get by David, so.
Right, exactly.
Right? It really doesn't matter at this point. I mean.
He'll certify that.
Yeah. All right, well, as far as I'm concerned, board members have any questions?
No.
No.
Any issues, comments?
All right, let's go to the audience. Anyone in the audience have any issues, comments in reference to 42 Wheeler Road? Seeing none. All right, Charlie, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Like to get a motion in reference to the application, please. Mr. Morris is not here, so that's that.
Relative to 42 Wheeler Road, make a motion. The owner Marcio De Jesus requests a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise an existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in the R5 zoning district, map 57, parcel 7, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mash General Laws 48, Section 9. Two, site plan, 42 Wheeler Road Mashpee, Mass., prepared for Marcio De Jesus, date 7/24/23, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, drawn by SAP, revision date 10/19/23 and 10/10/23, HSE/areas/dwellings prepared by Colley Site Services LLC. Three, building plans, 42 Wheeler Road Mashpee, Mass., prepared for De Jesus residence 1-01. New house perimeter 1-02, layout first floor 1-03, layout second floor 1-04, front view, rear view 1-05, right view, left view, prepared by Penhero Guttowski Interior Design. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Excuse me. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. The board finds that the application as submitted is not substantially more detrimental than what existed prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new non-conformities being created. And I'd just like to add to that a little bit with the submission.
Yes, and I have a question when you're done.
Yeah. And furthermore, under seven, that the new construction will comply with more current building code criteria. An updated IA system is being proposed. There are no new non-conformities being created. Lot coverage will be under the maximum allowed of 20%. The project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. Substantial mitigation replanting is proposed and approved. Dry wells are proposed to capture onsite stormwater, and the proposal is consistent with redevelopment in the neighborhood.
Well done, and you did the right thing. Nice. If I may ask one question, please. Is there any input from the fire department, the length of this driveway? About, if he didn't.
I got a response from Joe Pelletier saying no comments.
Okay, I'll send. Yep, do I have a motion? Oh, he made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. There you go.
How was that driveway on?
Thank you.
There you go, Jonathan.
Taking it easy on us.
You can take that, too.
He's going there.
Yes, sir. You?
Lot of paper here.
The 13th record. There you go. Yep. Yeah, I know. Yep. How many of these I have to sign?
There you go. Stop complicating.
Jeez, you had to sign all this stuff all the time?
Absolutely. It's part of the deal.
You're welcome. All right. Charlie, would you please read the next or first new hearing, please?
I shall. New hearings for December 13th, 2023, 31 Birch Way. Owners Gary J. and Denise M. Nagel request a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction of an existing garage and porch addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 27, parcel 86, Mashpee, Mass. The subject property has the following pre-existing non-conformities. Minimum lot area, minimum side yard setback, and setback to water and wetlands. The board will determine whether or not the proposed garage reconstruction and porch addition will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as required prior to taking any action on the request for a written finding. The subject lot size is 18,397 square feet, where 80,000 square feet is required. The southwestern corner of the subject property is 12.3 feet from the side lot line, where 15 feet is required, and the northeastern corner is 14.6 feet from the side lot line. Additionally, the existing deck is built within the 50-foot buffer to water and wetlands. The applicant does not propose any increases to the existing non-conformities on the subject property.
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you? Mike Canata, how are you?
Good.
Representing. Yeah, so it's a pretty straightforward project. It is a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, and he's exactly right in saying that we're not proposing any further non-conformities. We want to put back basically what was there, and the issues that we're having with this house, it was built, I believe, in the 70s, and the garage and breezeway section underneath it was buried tons of stumps, and that part of the building was built on these stumps. So now, subsequent 30-some-odd years later, the stumps have rotted, and the building is now unstable. So this, this is not a project that was kind of born by desire, it was born more by necessity. So we have to take down that garage and breezeway section and excavate out all of the wood pulp that's underneath it all, and bring back compacted fill, and put back the garage and breezeway right where it stands. The only footprint change that's being proposed is on the left side of the building with your back to the street, which is currently, right now, a paver walkway, and she wants to have a little four-foot covered roof deck to enter the front door. And that's on the left side of the building, which is not the non-conforming side. So the lot line on the right, the 12.3, is the one that's the closest, and we're going to be put back exactly what's there. So we're not increasing the conformity. It's still under the 20% rule. The calculations are 17.4 is where we're at. So I don't, I don't think it's, you know, a problem, but I'll let you guys tell me if you have any questions. It's pretty straightforward. We're just trying to fix a problem that's there that, you know, is, the building has dropped five and a half inches, yeah, from where it was, and the foundation's completely separated from the old.
You're not, you're not doing any, creating any new non-conformity?
No.
Are you doing a system?
No, I actually wasn't even sure I had to come before you guys, but the building inspector, Dave, said I needed to come before you. I said, we're not, we're not proposing any more non-conformities, so we just got to take out what's there and put back what's there.
Charlie, would you read any input from other boards or committees?
Yeah, I have, let me just make sure I have them all.
Take your time, and Evan's comments, recommendations, I'd say is better way to put it.
Okay, there's a notification from Dan Kent, from Conservation, dated December 8th, 2023, relative to 31 Birch Way. RDA application received a negative determination voted unanimously by the commission. Just go on. Board of Health received 112723 to remain three-bedroom. And DPW comments from Catherine Laurent, dated 112923. 31 Birch Way is a town road. While no modifications to the existing paved driveway are proposed, currently stormwater runoff from the property flows to the road. At a minimum, I request that any approval be conditioned upon installation of gutters, downspouts, and dry wells on the new garage and porch to address the roof runoff.
If you were to make a motion, please include that.
I will do that. And I believe that's all I have.
And then you would just read Evan's recommendations, please.
Yeah. Commensurate with his position as community development director on December 6, 2023, to the zoning board of appeals from Evan Lara, were his comments relative to his review of the material that had been submitted on behalf of the petitioner. And the, just make sure, the, and his recommendation is the planning department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the board can grant a written finding. Please be mindful of a potential lot coverage non-conformity, and ensure, if it exists, that the non-conformity is considered in your deliberation and motions.
And I would like to state after you reading that, that this board should take that into consideration as recommendation, but this board is not bound by that recommendation. Okay, do we have any other?
I have nothing else in writing from anybody that I'm aware of.
Open up questions to the board.
Just explain the negative.
NOI, notice of intent, notice of, so a negative determination means that you file enough information with the Conservation Commission to make a decision. You're after it. If you do not have to file a notice of intent, you satisfy the requirements for the Conservation Commission, and you're all set to move forward. It's a shortcut to a, to a conservation full filing, and it is a process that you want negative, not positive. Positive would mean you would have to go back to Conservation with a full filing of a notice of intent.
Correct.
But in this case, they get a negative determination of applicability, and that means I have enough, I'm Conservation, I have enough information, I'm happy with your filing, move forward. So you want to have a negative determination in that case. It's good for the applicant, which is rare.
Well, I think in this case, the Conservation Commission looked at it, and there was a couple of things. There was no vegetation to be removed, none proposed. The existing dwelling that blocks the work zone or is a buffer from the work zone to the top of the inland bank, and that's where Conservation's most concerned, and we're not proposing any work on that side of the building. We're all on the street side.
The bottom line is Conservation has stated the following, shortcut procedure, you're okay.
Right. And, and for the record, regarding the downspouts, that was Conservation's request as well. That was one condition they put.
Yeah, so if there were a motion made, it would have to include that, so you're going to have to amend this plan and depict those.
Okay.
And my concern is, what size storm do you design to, and what do you use? Do you use, do you use DEP, or what criteria?
For the, for the dry wells themselves?
Yeah.
I, I use the, the flow wells with, and I dig them in with an excavator, and I overdig them, I fill them with crushed stone.
So you don't know what size storm you would design to, though? Whether it's 50, 25-year, five-year, whatever?
Oh, no, and honestly, I'd only be catching unless, unless the areas of the house where I'm not doing any work, you're proposing that I need to put dry wells in those areas.
Well, no, I think the DPW director stated, now I could be wrong, that the new garage that you're rebuilding needs to have dry wells to catch the water from that location.
That's all she said.
And so that being said, you would have to put in, I'm not going to design it, but you'd have to show us a design, so why don't you do this, if it's okay with the board? If you were to obtain an approval tonight, resubmit a design that I will take a quick look at if it's okay, and then we can just approve without having to come back to the full board, is that all right?
That's fine.
And I'll sign off on that.
Fine.
So just make sure it's adequate size. I'll do a calculation quickly, I can do a drainage calculation.
Okay.
And so just over-design, not under-design. I want to be able to say to DPW director that we're reducing quantity of water leaving the site.
Right.
Okay, so.
Need the dimensions of the garage, I would guess.
You want the square area, the roof area being proposed, right?
Yeah, and you just want to over-design that criteria, please.
Make that part of the condition?
Yes, please, yeah. And I think, I'm just asking this board if it's okay. I'll stop in and see Mary Ann once you do that, I'll sign off on it if it meets the criteria, and that way you can move forward, and we then satisfy DPW, and if the board sees fit to make a motion and approve your application tonight, you don't have to come back to the board.
Perfect, sounds great.
Does that make sense, guys?
That's fine.
Any other questions from the board? There is one question that Evan is raising, and that is, I don't know if you heard in his request, and that was, the potential lot coverage non-conformity will, and ensure, if it exists, that no new non-conformity is considered in your deliberation. So are there any non-conformities such as wetlands, lot coverage, is there anything? Because you are adding on to the left-hand side of the house.
Yeah, no, we're still under the 20%.
Even with?
Even with.
The calculation, remember, you cannot use any land subject to flooding or anything under jurisdiction of Conservation in that calculation.
Correct. That's correct.
Well, look at, look at this, how much it goes up.
Well, I get it, but he's saying 20%, so if it's 1%, he's over the 20%.
What goes from what?
Are you saying you're at 20% now?
Oh, no, no, I'm at 17.4.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm at 17, I'm well under the 20%.
Okay.
As the building stands right now, I believe it's 16.8 or something.
Well, I just, he's pointing out, please be mindful of a potential lot coverage non-conformity.
Yep.
So that says to me, I want to look at that, and you, and you're saying to me, you've, you've taken into consideration, when you've calculated that 17.4, you have removed the wetland area up against Mashpee Pond when you've used that calculation.
I'm looking at the engineering plan right in front of me, and it says, house, garage, porch decks, and stairways, 17.4%.
Right, but my question is, is, did your engineer take out, when he was calculating that 17.4, the land that Conservation has jurisdiction over, which is all that land that has a steep slope leading down to Mashpee Pond?
Yeah, so.
You can't use that in your calculation.
Right.
This is very important.
I know what you're saying. So that question that was raised by Evan, I did talk to my engineer about that, and he said if we took that BBW area out, we'd be at 17.8, so it's still well under.
So you need to correct this document then, because this is, this is depicting that you're at 17.4, when in fact, you're at 17.8.
Well, he was unaware of that rule, which I thought was kind of un.
It is a, remand is a finding by a judge, and that judge has decided that we as a board and overseeing that specific issue, we need, we cannot take into, any applicant cannot take and utilize.
Right.
The land that Conservation has jurisdiction over in reference to law.
So this document was already done prior to that, and so I saw that letter, which just came in my email the other day.
Well, that can.
And so when he does the dry well, I'll show the dry well, I'll have him adjust the percentage and back that out and show it, and I'll resubmit that. The dry wells.
So now I have a question of the board, and that is, you know where it's coming, and that is, we have two issues that have to, this plan has to be amended.
I think it should come back.
I think so. I think so, Jim. I think so.
Just to show both of that one plan.
Here's what we're saying, here's what I'm reading from this board. Because we have that issue, and we have the dry well issue, we're going to ask you for an extension till the next meeting, and you to resubmit the plan, correct it.
Okay.
If it was just a dry well, you might have, but when you get into the other one, we have been remanded and asked to be very careful in reference to lot coverage. It's very important.
Okay, so I need to come back again?
Am I reading that right, board members?
Right. And I think what we're saying is that everything is fine when we get that new plan back with those.
Yeah, I just, I'm not clear why submitting the plan, submitting the plan corrected is, is going to satisfy what your question is.
It sounds like to me, I think from our own board members, with a correctly submitted plan that's lot coverage, taking into consideration any wetlands issues, and the issue, the dry well issue, if those issues are dealt with on this plan, and he resubmits, he shouldn't have any other issues.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Okay.
All right.
When's the next meeting? That I can?
January 10th.
And Ron, is it just the percentage that has to be put on the plan that we don't have now?
That's correct. And so it's wrongly, it's wrongly calculated, so we have a plan that depicts something that's incorrect.
But the resubmission without coming here isn't sufficient?
No.
Okay.
No. We've been recommended, we've, we've, we have been told more than once that we should have finished plans. I can bend that rule a little bit when it comes to a drainage structure, not in a plan, but when you get into lot coverage, just take it over the top. That being said, when is the next meeting?
January 10th.
Would you like to request a continuance until January 10th?
Yeah, I want to come back as soon as possible.
So that would be January 10th, so you were asking for an extension, right?
Yes, sir.
So would someone like to make a motion that we accept a continuance until January 10th? 10th, please?
I move that we accept the continuance requested to January 10th for submission of the plan and hearing before the board.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
There you go.
Okay, so.
Charlie, am I over, over utilizing your services yet tonight? Because I know I got you going six ways to Sunday.
Hey, talk is cheap. I can do it.
If you want, I can have someone else read it.
I'm fine.
All right. I don't, I don't want you leaving here all tired up, you know?
Keeps the mind active, Ron.
Okay, listen, Charlie, would you like to read their next new submittal, please, or application?
I would be delighted. Okay. Thirty-three Sunset Circle, owners Kevin and Suzanne C. Mulgrew, trustees of the Thirty-three Sunset Circle Realty Trust, request a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for reconstruction, an extension of an existing deck to a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 64 parcel 28 Mashpee, Mass. The subject property has the following pre-existing nonconformities: minimum lot area and setback to water and wetlands. The board will determine whether or not the proposed deck extension will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as required prior to taking action on the request for a written finding. The subject lot size is 18,640 square feet, where 80,000 square feet is required. The existing structure is more or less bisected by the 50-foot buffer line from water and wetlands, and the entire deck proposed to be rebuilt is totally within the 50-foot setback to water and wetlands. The applicant proposes to add 686 square feet to the overall deck area, increasing the nonconforming nature of the setback to water and wetlands by six feet. Additionally, the applicant proposes to add an additional 80 square feet of deck area to the northerly side within the setback to water and wetlands.
Notice of intent. Those intent is approved. Full application.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex. I am a contractor. I represent Kevin and Susan Mulgrew. So what we're trying to do is, the existing deck is in a very poor condition, and it's very unsafe. So it needs to be completely rebuilt. The size of the deck, which is only 10 feet wide, is not, is not following the purpose, what they're trying to use it for. This is the reason why we're asking to extend only one portion of the deck, and to make it overall 16 by 16. So by increasing one side only six feet towards the border. And we already went through the conservation. We got an approval from them. We're using all the existing sonotubes. We're only adding two. And lot coverage is well under 20%. I believe it's 12.3.
Is that yours, submittal?
Yes.
Is this plan?
Charlie, could you read comments from various boards, committees, and Evan's recommendation, please?
Would do that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, proposed rebuild deck.
Yeah. Received December 8, 2023 from Dan Kent Conservation, Thirty-three Sunset Circle NOI application was approved unanimously by the commission with the condition of a drywell installed and diamond pier footing for deck footings in the island bank. And from the Board of Health, Thirty-three Sunset Circle, received 11/27/23. Board of Health, no habitable space, no habitable space, no comment. And relative to the recommendation from Evan Lara, which I believe is December 8 of 2023, recommendation, the planning department suggests that the proposed continuance, extension, or alterations proposed would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existed previously, and that the board can grant a written finding. This recommendation is made solely because the expanded deck area that increases the setback to water and wetland nonconformity is over a portion of the lot previously disturbed with a set of stairs. Please be mindful of a potential lot coverage nonconformity, and ensure if it exists that the nonconformity is considered in your deliberation and motions.
Yeah. Okay, so again, I will state, it is, in the best interest of certainly our town and community, that we read Evan's recommendations into the record. Again, it is the board's decision and the ultimate end, and we have, we have a right to make our own decision based on that. But I see what Evan is pointing out, and that is, that the decks that you're wanting to add are increasing the nonconformity to John's Pond because of setback to well.
Mm-hmm.
And secondly, and this, this concerns me as much if not actually more, and that is, how do we know that lot coverage, as we had in a prior, a previous application, is calculated the correct way unless we actually see numbers on a plan, on this sheet, showing that he's not, he or she is not utilizing land subject to flooding and under jurisdiction of conservation?
Yeah.
You see my point? I mean, you don't, you see proposed lot coverage 14.8, I get it. So that falls with, that's not nonconform, that is conforming. I get it.
But does it include the entire lot?
Right. And, and he could be an out-of-town engineer that doesn't understand the remand that we had from a judge, saying that you cannot use that square footage.
That's the same argument we just had with the last guy.
Yeah, the engineer is local.
Five minutes ago.
Yeah, no, I know. We know, Mr. Hood. I get that. I'm just, I'm bringing this up as an issue that's come to my head, in that if we have an engineer that's new to our community, may not be this situation, and he, he or she gives us lot coverage based on structures on a lot, and does not, and uses the conservation properties, land that conservation has jurisdiction over, in its computation incorrectly so, we do not know that. Because we don't see his, we don't see his calculations. That's my concern.
All right, so let's see where it goes.
But minimumly, minimumly, you're going to have to request, in my opinion, subject to this board's input, some type of relief, because you are actually getting closer to the wetlands than you're, so your nonconformity is going to increase.
Yes.
So at the waterline, it's 40 feet, and at the deck, it's what, 45? I see all these lines.
So those are grade lines?
Yeah, it tells me that it's a steep grade.
It is, the closer they're together, the steeper it is.
So what we have to do is back up land subject to flowage, coastal flowage, right?
Yes.
This is John's Pond.
Right. I'm just, I don't see the, yes, so I don't see the real lot. You see the 50-foot buffer line? That's this line right here. So that's 50 feet off of it. But where is his lot line in the rear? And where is the actual, what?
It's a dotted line, I believe.
BVW right there is O2. Border veget, is 101. See that? Is that line there? So there is, part of this lot is in the resource area. So that means whatever engineer did this cannot use lot area, meaning, no, cannot use lot square footage, I have to watch my language, lot square footage, in its totality, in computating lot coverage, he has to reduce, or she has to reduce the lot area by the land that is under conservation jurisdiction, and then use the lot coverage computation.
Which is everything closer to the water from the BVW.
Correct. Border, border veget, bordering vegetated well, that's correct.
All that has got to be taken out.
Right.
And it actually should be listed twice. Once that includes it, and once that doesn't include it.
Yeah. See, that's one thing.
So that we know that there's a difference.
We need this clarification. That's something that has to go to our comments at the next meeting. It's imperative, because we have applicants, Ben being tried, making applications, that we do not know are following that criteria or not.
Right. Should list both.
Right. It should say, yeah, proposed lot coverage, including maybe, you know, land subject to conservation jurisdiction, and exclude it. That way we know that it's.
That's taken into effect.
Right.
What we're finding is that the engineers who deal with the town with frequency understand that, and when they submit the plan, they show both of the notice to us so that we know that it's taken into consideration.
And I know Mr. Hood has been front of this board before. I'm not sure, though, that he is aware of this situation.
Okay.
Because he's not coming in front of the board as much as other local engineers may have come. And my point is, he may not have taken that into consideration, and that concerns me.
I will definitely address that.
What I'd like to do then at this point is go to the audience. Anyone in the audience have any input in this application? Okay, seeing none.
So when you come back, make sure that all of it's listed. And let's assume for argument that the 14.8% includes the entire lot, even land.
With conservation jurisdiction.
That's got BVW.
So if that's the case, that 14.8 should go, is probably going to go up.
Yeah, probably whatever the number is, 16, 17, I don't know. Whatever the number is.
And if in this zone maximum is 20, you certainly don't want to go over that.
So that's, that should all be listed on this plan.
Okay.
And then secondly, you need to understand what your wetland, what your setback from BVW or any conservation jurisdictional land is, is from your improvements. So that this board understands that you're getting closer to those resource areas by X amount of feet, then we can make a decision on that. Right now, you cannot see that on the plan. It just says proposed rebuilt deck, but it doesn't say distance to resource area. That could be a BVW, it could be flood, it could be anything, land subject to flood. So, yeah, so we need to understand what that dimension is, and if it is getting closer, this board's going to have to make a decision, because you're expanding a not, a pre-existing nonconformity. Possibly. We don't know.
Yep, okay.
Let's see your intent.
I'll get that.
Slammed.
Wait, I think it's going to only get more and more like that. But do you, do you have total clarity in this?
Yes, I do.
We don't want him to just?
Yes.
Okay. You can have Mr. Hood give a call to Mary Ann if, in fact, he has any questions. And Mary Ann, if I have to, I'll call him. It doesn't matter to me. I just, I just want to make sure you're clear on our request.
No, no, I do understand exactly what you want. I already made all the notes, so.
All right, so would you like to ask a, for a continuance?
Yes, I do.
Until, Mary Ann?
Do you want January 10?
I would love to.
All right, Charlie?
Motion relative to Thirty-three Sunset Circle to continue the hearing to January 10th, where it will be presented with the new plan to the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I was doing something different.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Look forward to seeing you on January 10th.
Anything to say?
Nope, nothing to say. Charlie, would you read the next new application, 29 Riverside, please?
I shall do that. The next application is 29 Riverside Road. Owners Russell J. and Anne E. Spencer, request a special permit under 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 119 parcel 81 Mashpee, Mass. The subject property has the following pre-existing nonconformities: minimum side yard setback, lot coverage, and setback to water and wetlands. The board will determine whether or not the proposed replacement dwelling has adequate parking, that any nonconforming aspects of the replacement dwelling are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Charlie.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Russell and Anne Spencer, owners of 29 Riverside Road. I am going to ask for a continuance to January 24th for two reasons. One is you only have four voting members. The other reason is, is that unfortunately, we received some conflicting information, and this morning we were advised that conservation does have jurisdiction to review this project, and therefore, you know, based on this board's policy, so to speak, that, you know, we get those approvals before being heard on this one.
It's, having, having the applicant state that, so we want to put in the record that Jonathan has chosen to step down for this application. All right, so you are asking for an extension until what date, please?
January 24th, I believe, is your next meeting.
Does that work?
That, the second one in.
Yeah.
January, yes.
So is it January 24th? Charlie, would you like to make that motion, please?
Sure. Relative to 29 Riverside Road, the request is made by motion to continue the hearing from this evening until January 24, 2024, with new information obtained between now and then.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. Thank you very much.
You are welcome. Could someone tell Jonathan?
Stand in there.
Okay. Charlie, would you please read the next application, which is 90 Pappanessett Island?
I shall. 90 Pappanessett Island Road. Owner Brendan P. Giblin requests a special permit under 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing nonconforming residential structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure with associated pool and attached garage with guest suite above on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 106 parcel 34 Mashpee, Mass. The pre-existing nonconforming dwelling is located entirely in the flood zone. The board will determine whether or not the proposed replacement dwelling has adequate parking, and that any nonconforming aspects are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and that there are no new nonconformities being created. The existing property has the following pre-existing nonconformities: lot area, setback to water and wetlands, and lot coverage. The subject lot size is 20,421 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required. However, the lot is entirely within the flood zone and currently has no upland area. The existing structure is within the 50-foot setback to water and wetlands noting approximately 37.5 feet to the coastal bank. The new proposed dwelling generally increases the intensity of the water and wetland setback nonconformity. The lot is currently covered with structures totaling 1,274 square feet. The applicant proposes replacement structures totaling 3,243 square feet, thus increasing the intensity of the lot coverage nonconformity.
Thank you, Charlie.
I have a letter, right?
Yes.
Want me to read it?
Sure.
What do you want?
I can tell you exactly. So I, I, I'm not going for it tonight. I've asked for a continuance. The reason for that is, is that this project is currently before DEP. There's a correspondence from, I believe, Greg Deser, who indicated on November 22nd that he needed about 30 days to issue, potentially issue a superseding order of conditions. So without that, I don't want this board to, you know, I don't, you know, this board will, you know, generally wouldn't make any decision until that DEP decision comes, comes through.
So you are going to hereby request an extension?
I am.
Until?
I would like January 10th. We expect that, per his letter, we're expecting it. But I will defer to the board.
Why don't we go to the following one?
All right, so that's.
Just in case. No, that was slammed on the deck.
Understood.
Charlie, would you like to make that motion, please?
Sure.
Relative to 90 Pappanessett Island Road, motion is made to continue the hearing from this evening until January 24, 2024. to continue the hearing from this evening until January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, in anticipation of receiving new information.
Right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye. Aye, thank you.
Okay, so you might as well remain in the seat. I think thirty-seven Nick, make it, uh, part of the record, please, that Jonathan is stepping down on this. I guess, I think. Counselor, are you submitting?
So, what requires someone to leave the room?
Um, I've, Town Council in this town states that if you feel you're in conflict, you leave the room. So if you have any feeling that you're in conflict in your own mind, you should leave the room. And then, and everybody has varying opinions of that?
It doesn't mean whether you know or you don't know somebody. It means whether you can decide it.
Right. It's up to you. It's, I mean, he's making a decision. He lives by his decision. If somebody brings up this issue someday, he's going to defend it. So Charlie, would you like to read the next, or did you just read thirty, would you like to read?
I couldn't. There were two more, Nick Trail and Ethel.
Yeah, so please read thirty-seven Nick Trail into the record.
Yep. All right, Nick Trail, uh, thirty-seven Nick Trail. Owners Brian J. and Karen F. Kelleher request a variance from one seventy-four thirty-one, special footnote twelve of the zoning bylaws to allow for separation of a merged lot shown on assessors map one-one-seven parcel three hundred and located in both the R three and Papaneset overlay districts, map one-one-seven parcel three hundred Mashpee, Mass. The relief is requested because the entity entirety of the subject property is in the flood zone. And while the lot currently has enough land area and frontage to divide, its flood zone status prevents division without relief. The board will consider whether or not there is a unique lot shape, topographical condition, or soil condition that necessitates relief pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section ten. Approval of the relief requested would not effectuate division of the subject lot. If appro, if approved, the applicant will need to seek endorsement by the planning board of a plan believed not to require approval under the subdivision control law.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain. Um, I am going to request a continuance to the January twenty-fourth, uh, so that I can present this before five members.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Charlie, would you like to make your motion?
Again, relative to thirty-seven Nick Trail, at the request of council and the applicants, it is requested that the hearing, uh, on this property be continued from tonight to January twenty-fourth.
Great, thank you.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second in that?
Second.
All is in favor?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, we have one left.
We have one left. Let me get. And I see no one in the audience. Oh, Chris is going to present. One's five.
Flying place for who receives it?
Yeah, it does. That's why I was asking. I didn't want to.
No, I.
I mean, I know, I know. Didn't want to be, I don't want to change.
It's kind of a funny thing.
Charlie, would you like to read the next or the last? Next and the last?
I would be happy to read the next and last, uh, relative to twenty-nine Echo Road and forty-one Echo Road. Petitioner Three M Ventures Inc., DBA Triple M Management Company, LLC, requests a modification under one seventy-four twenty-four C nine CE of the zoning bylaws and condition number five of the special permit decisions, SP two oh one five thirty-three, SP two oh one nine thirty-six, SP two twenty twenty-eight, uh, MOD two twenty-three oh eight, to extend the date for completion of construction from its previously extended date of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three to May thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, on property located in the I one and light industry overlay zoning districts, map, uh, nineteen parcels three dash eight and three dash nine Mashpee, Mass, owner of record, Triple M Management Company, LLC.
Good evening again. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, uh, representing Triple M, uh, Mashpee. Uh, this is a request for a, a extension of the existing special permit to May thirty-first. Uh, the board may recall, we were here about six months ago, uh, to request the extension to, uh, the board allowed an extension to December thirty-first. We were debating back and forth whether to extend that further, but there were some concerns raised by the fire department. So the board, um, you know, felt more comfortable giving the extension only till today. And, uh, you know, making sure that my clients, when they, if they needed to come back, which they do, that they consulted with the fire department. Um, and so we are here again. My understanding is, is that the fire department has been consulted. I don't see anybody from the fire department, and I believe if there was an issue, they would have been here. Um, but I don't know if there's any comments. I'm hopeful that, uh, that they were fine with everything. Um, I do apologize. I know I gave the board some information this morning. I, I, it wasn't substantive. It was just to give the board an idea of what's going on, what's.
Naughty, naughty. Don't do it again.
I won't. Uh, but it wasn't anything other than really just say, you know, we are making progress and this is, we, we, we should be able to be done.
I, I would just like to state this. I was very concerned at the last meeting, and I depicted that. Um, and I'm also a little concerned that our zoning enforcement officer is here because he was taken back too about some other, some issues that he had. So I remain concerned. I, I did not look in the, uh, in the folder. Do we have something from content from, uh, fire department?
I don't think, I don't think I've been able to take from anybody.
I gotta tell you, I'm enticed to do the following, to extend to our next meeting. I don't want to put you in default, but I've got to get something from the fire department here and from zoning enforcement office.
I stand corrected. Thanks, George. Uh, we have from the, uh, Catherine Laurent, uh, from the department.
Yeah.
Uh, relative to twenty-nine Echo Road and forty-one, uh, Echo Road. Echo Road is a town road. While the original project did receive a cub cut permit from the DPW, this permit has expired. Since then, an issue has arisen with the turning radius for the driveway aprons. The radius is too short slash abrupt, so vehicles and large trucks entering or exiting the property cut the corner. This is causing a pothole at each corner and will eventually break down the edge of the pavement for Echo Road. I request that any approved extension be conditioned upon the widening of the paved turning radius for each entrance and exit for the properties within the next six months.
Well, that's, that's some, that's something we can deal with, but as far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem extending to the next available time to be heard, but I need to hear from, I need to hear from the fire department. And I frankly need to hear from the zoning enforcement office.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't want to speak for either of those parties. I, I talked to David. I don't think that he would have an issue with it. Um, the fire department, they were, they were absolutely consulted on this, so, but I agree.
I, I mean, this was, this is a hot topic, and frankly, I just, as the chair, I can't, I can't see this thing moving forward. And I certainly am not trying to put you in a default situation. I have no problem asking for an extension, you know, asking the board to make a motion to extend until some date certain, so we can hear back from those two people. Um, and I presume we could, if the motion were to be made, we could condition it on DPW's issue, but not hearing from those two people concerns me.
And that's fair enough. I'm, as long as the board is willing to.
How about to the end of January? Cause you, can you come back on the twenty-fourth?
I can, so if the board were to agree to extend, to extend the time for completion to January thirty-first, then I'll be back on the twenty-fourth to, to request an additional.
You can clean up the DPW.
You're, you're clear with us. So something from, from fire department saying, we're happy, and something from David saying, he's happy.
Yeah, so the only thing I would ask from the board procedurally, I should be filing a new application for an extension from the thirty-first to May thirty, from January thirty-first? Because you're granting me the modification till X date.
Yes.
And then it's going to expire, so I need another modification.
Well, hold it. So we're, we're mod, we will agree to a modification, special permit tonight until January thirty-one.
Right, and then what happens is when I usually get close to expiration, I file a new request for a modification. So I'll have to do that from February first to May thirty-first.
Are you better off just leaving the date of May thirty-first in there?
Well, I, the board, that's not what I'm hearing from the board.
It's, it's running out.
Right.
At the end of the year.
I, I don't know how to fix your issue.
So the question is, Ron doesn't want to make a determination till we hear from these two parts.
I guess the question is, does the board need a formal request for a mo, because every time I do this, I file a formal request for modification.
I'm okay with the following. If you're asking for an extension till January thirty-one, I'm asking, going to ask for a motion to be made. Between now and the thirty-first, you know what you need to do. At that point in time, I'm prepared. Once those people are satisfied entirely, I'm willing as chair to say, make a motion to extend appropriately.
Okay.
And you'll know that probably. You'll know the answer in two weeks.
They're going to say, we love it, but, but it's going to be a problem, I can tell you. It's got to be, we love it. And I am from both aspects of that. And, you know, the rest of it can be conditioned, I believe. I, you know, that's relatively easy. But I cannot condition on something I'm not aware of.
No, no, I, I, and I'm not asking, I'm just, I, just a procedural guidance.
I'll work with you procedurally wise. I mean, I get it. I just, uh, I, I just can't go.
No, no, I just, I, that's fair enough.
So Charlie, would you please make a motion reference to January thirty-one?
But we're not having any conditions relative to that.
We're only extending his, we're extending his, we're extending his special permit until, uh, or, do you want to extend the permit? Do you want to extend the decision-making of that permit?
I need to extend the completion date in what, section five, whatever it is, to January thirty-first.
Exact day. So we're going to extend condition number five until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
We're sure it's number five.
Yeah, well, you might. Yeah, I think that's kind of important, Counselor.
It is.
That would hurt.
The motion relative to.
Yes, it's condition number five.
Forty-nine and forty-one Echo Road. Petitioner Three M Ventures Inc., DBA Triple M Management Company, LLC, requests a modification under one seventy-four twenty-four C nine CE of the zoning bylaws and condition number five of the special permit decision, SP two thousand fifteen thirty-three, SP two thousand nineteen thirty-six, SP twenty twenty dash twenty-eight, MOD twenty twenty-three oh eight, to extend the date for completion of construction from its previously extended date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, to January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, on property located in the I one and light industry overlay zoning districts, map nineteen parcels three dash eight and three dash nine Mashpee, Mass, owner of record, Triple M Management Company, LLC, with the following conditions. The board accepts the request for a modification of the special permit under one seventy-four twenty-four C nine CE of the zoning bylaws and condition number.
Sorry, go ahead, continue. Yeah, I don't know if you need what you, go ahead. I'm sorry, I don't want to.
At condition number five of the decisions, SP two thousand fifteen thirty-three, SP two thousand nineteen thirty-six, SP two twenty twenty-eight, MOD twenty twenty-three oh eight, to extend the date for completion of construction from its previously extended date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, to January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Is that?
I think that works.
That's all right?
It works.
I think that's fine.
All right. It, it works.
Probably covered too much, but that's okay.
It's fine. Uh, so I have a second in that motion, please? All is in favor?
All right. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Please get everybody to say they love you.
I will. I, I was hoping that I was going to have that, but I know David had, uh, some, uh.
Help us help you.
I know.
I, I just don't want, they love you, but. There's an extension to his, his number five condition until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Just, just numbers five. Well, that's the only thing it's, the permits in jeopardy with.
Right, exactly.
The rest of it stands.
Right.
So we extended chap, number five, because it lapsed in December of thirty-one. So we extended it till January thirty-one. Oh, he's coming back, January thirty-one.
Extended from the thirty-first of January to May thirty.
Yeah, he has to come back to this board before January thirty-one, where, any one of those meetings. There you go.
I'll make sure that we're offered.
He will contact you. He will probably be asked to be put on the agenda January twenty-fourth, but that's up to him. He will proceed that. He will, he will oversee that, I'm sure. All right, so I think there's a motion. Do we have a motion to approve minutes?
I don't know.
I don't have one.
Yeah, we do.
If there isn't, so moved.
If there isn't, Charlie, I love it.
We got it all in favor, right?
So let's see. Proved minutes dated November eighth, twenty twenty-three. Like to have a motion.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, just additional, just to the, hopefully, next meeting, we're going to have our new guidelines for submittal. I'm asking, um, our fantastic Mary Ann, who's done a great job for us this year, and she's done several years for us. I mean, has been doing this.
Congratulations.
So I'm asking her to put it actually on the agenda, so that.
Yeah. So that everybody that comes in has the.
Yeah, and specifically Evan will know that he needs to get her done.
Hey, how about, you know, with engineers that don't come before us frequently, so they will know what we require.
It should be writing and.
So here's, and Jonathan brought this up, and I think he's a hundred percent correct. So on that list, it should say, pre, um, um, lot coverage, um, utilizing, uh, land subject to conservation jurisdiction. And then the next one down, lot coverage not using. So that way, we know he's taking, or she is taking into effect. So, and we've also asked, and it probably should be stated, that we want to see structure coverage. So there should be three things: structure coverage, lot coverage, not utilize, utilizing land that is controlled by, that is in conservation jurisdiction, which is one thirty-one forty. And then the last one would be lot coverage excluding that, which is the way we need to utilize it.
Land subject to coastal flowage.
Say again?
BVD.
Shouldn't it be structure coverage, with them without?
Yes, we want to make sure that's in there, because right now, we do not know if the person that comes in here that says lot coverage is fourteen percent, if they're doing it correctly.
No, we don't know that.
We don't. And that's what came to my head so many times tonight.
And we, we can't do it.
No.
We're just guessing.
Yeah, so I mean, the bottom line is, we need to have those, and so that the engineer preparing that says, why do they want it? Oh, that means that they have to exclude that land. Yes, that's true.
So if a lot, if a house is in a flood zone today, that it's a hundred percent.
Then you have, technically, you have zero lot.
So it would be a hundred and then zero.
That's what Evan is saying in reference to one of the lot applications, right?
I got it, I got it.
Whole lot. So there's no lot.
Yeah.
There's no lot.
Thirty-seven Nick and ninety.
Right.
Papaneset Island.
So technically, some people are trying to split two lots, but there's no lot, there's no land on that lot.
Cause it's in flood, it's in flood zone.
We knew when this, this judge made this decision that you couldn't include that. I said to many people at the billing department, what are you going to do with a lot that is totally not built on yet, but totally in flood plain? That means it has no area at all.
Does that mean it can never be built on?
Have to come here, that's for sure.
That's what it sounds like.
They have to come here, and they're asking for pretty heavy lift. My point is, is.
Well, they have to go to conservation, too.
Yeah, exactly. So you get, there, but I think somebody did some research, and there was like five or ten lots in our community. But still, you don't want to be an owner of one of those lots in New Seabury on the ocean that's worth X amount of dollars. It's not buildable anymore.
Right.
But that's not a determination we made. That was, that was, that was a judge who made that decision, and we have to, we have to follow it. It's that simple. And we need to make sure that these, these engineers that are drafting these site plans follow it.
You know, I think the way to do that is, is you and John suggest, if, if everything is there that the engineers need to give us, then we're all dealing from the same deck all the time.
And right now, we don't have that.
I agree.
Now, we need to know what the structure size is without the, uh, without, without the, the, uh.
Land subject.
Right. See, I think you need three.
Structure.
Structure size, because that was the only way we used to do it, right? Lot, lot, structure coverage, structure coverage. Then in our own mind, we can see, what are these people doing? And they're doing mega mansion type of, and then the next one's got to be lot coverage using total lot area. And then the last one is lot coverage not using any land subject to conservation control or one thirty-one forty.
Yeah.
And that's the three criteria we need. And that's the three criteria we need. And that'll give us the ability to say, this person did it right.
Yep.
Though we need a fourth one, which would be structure within the, the last comment you made, the last.
No, because that really has no bearing on us anymore, because it converted to lot coverage. It's, I'd have to show you on a plan, but it, we don't need it, but I'd love to, I'd love to show it to you on a plan. It's, it gets convoluted.
Yeah. Something you need structure, you need a structure before, you know, before you consider all the other elements, then you need structure with everything out of it.
You could add that, but I think I could show you on paper where you wouldn't need it. But more than happy to show that to you. Because I actually did it, I was going to, to actually give a presentation to this board. When this thing came from the judge on all the ramifications that could be had about the decision that this gentleman made and how it's gonna affect applicants coming in front of this board, it was, it was encompassing. It's huge.
Yeah.
It's huge. It's really, it's, it's crazy, but, and we're starting to deal with it now. You're gonna see a lot more of it.
True today.
Yeah, you'll see a lot more of it. It's like, you know, a, a lot that's totally in a flood plain. There's no land in that lot.
Not an existing building, so you really can't build it.
Well, the, the desirable land is the land that's close to the water, and the lands that are close to the water presents that problem.
Yeah, they're in flood plains, and, you know.
It's a two-sided sword.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, well, I'd like to get a motion to, to convene.
That we adjourn to whenever we're supposed to do it again.
Exactly, exactly. I like that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Good night, everybody.